Good evening, we're going to open the Sony Board of Appeals meeting. My name is Howie Traister. Elaine Baker is a regular member. Eric Spahn's a regular member and Doug Packer is an alternate who will be sitting on three of the hearings tonight. And we're going to start off with a continuance of Julie Ostrander. Is anybody here representing her?
I don't see her.
Okay. We'll move on.
Do you want to continue that, uh, to the end, Gregor scheduled meeting on her behalf?
I guess.
Okay. Make the motion.
Yeah, can someone make a motion that will continue the meeting if, uh...
Sure.
It's agreeable. Will be making it?
No, I just wanted to just double check what we were...
She did not appear last month either because she was expecting some land changes and she did request a continuance.
Right.
But, um, I had not heard from...
It's a reason reconstruct.
Yeah. Right. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we continue the, uh, the hearing.
Second?
Seventy-five old point of road.
Second?
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Close. Motion passes. Okay, so we'll move on to a continuance with, uh, Gregory and Cynthia and Cheryl's bash off. Want to come up? The plans you raised the last one.
He's our question.
Good.
Yeah, right, okay.
I think they were gonna go a little bit again.
Good evening.
Hi.
Okay, so when we were here last month, we talked about different things and Doug was going to check with the town council, uh, see, uh, what her opinion was on what we could do. So, I'll let Doug speak to that.
They learned two pieces of information relative to the lot change. Um, the board, there's... We're on solid enough ground to find that those lot changes that were made in...
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one.
Correct.
Back to the seventy, the date of the seventies, whenever that was.
Yeah.
I have that day committed to mind. Um, but that could be seen as a minor lot change, um, not, not, um, having to go to a new lot status. Um, so the board could find that. As far as the use goes, it's going to be up to you to show that back in the seventies, that that use, that two-family home use, was allowed. Um, and then later on, your lot would, when we either went to the forty or at some other time...
Right.
It was disallowed and we went to the single-family home status.
Right, well, I have the, uh, I gave you a copy of the, the law then.
Look, let me, could I see it one more time?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, right, I've highlighted it. Here's the three laws. This is a law that started in, uh, fifty-nine. Here is sixty-eight when they changed it to twenty thousand. And there's the law of seventy-eight when they changed it to forty thousand. You have the, you have the registered plot plan that was signed up by the board in sixty-nine. I have another copy of the legal. So in nineteen sixty-eight, they changed the law that you could have, instead of a half acre, twenty thousand square feet. It could be a single or a two-family residence or a mobile home.
In sixty-eight?
In sixty-eight. They changed it from a half acre to twenty thousand square.
Okay, let me get that right here. So we've got one and two family residences in fifty-nine, land may be used for ordinary uses. All right, in sixty-eight, they did. They went to twenty thousand square feet and they did not change uses. Uses by special permit. Wonder what the rest of Article thirty was.
It might have something to do with language about airport.
Uh, yeah, well, it's a little more than airport. Well, it talks about airport in layup strip, but it, it's, it's starting to drill into uses and these were special uses by permit. And this was letter C. So I wonder what A and B were, um, if those, if they changed at all. Because I agree, they went to the twenty thousand square feet. You still complied anyways, then. You, you were over twenty thousand square feet. But they started to change some uses here.
And then seventy-eight is when they did.
They went to the forty thousand.
In a hundred and twenty-five foot frontage.
Yep. Okay, and where's the rest of it? If I have the rest of that article and the rest of that article did not remove the two-family use when this was voted on, then the board can give him relief without it. We don't have, um, without, that's the most important piece of, the land change is not that critical.
Expend the rights and places.
Yes.
Yep. And the, and the, the lot change in ninety-one was to correct, uh...
Yeah, he said that.
Your whole, uh...
We can, you know, it's not bulletproof, but we're standing on fairly solid ground to find that that law change was just a minor change to correct a, you know, a scrims error or an error in the field. Um, it's, it's more the use that it goes to now. So you had the right and the privilege to use that. Um, it looks like you may have still had it here, but I don't have the rest of that language. I want to see the rest of, um, A and B.
Okay, uh, Leslie had it. That's why it came out on that book like that, which she conquered it, you know, came out.
With this.
That size, yeah. That size, so it's just like probably, you know, the page before, the page after.
And if there were, if that use wasn't removed during this same period when they made all these zoning changes, um, then you're on pretty solid ground or we're on pretty solid ground to, to give you relief.
So you just need to circle back to around those other pages.
Yeah, she did, if she's got them, uh, the, you know, she pulled up some old...
Well, she had the, she had the book.
Yeah, she had some old books, you know.
So she just gets the prior page.
I mean, just one page, just a prior page, I think would probably do it.
Yeah, all right. We can do that.
Do check, it says thirty, A and B. Who knows whether B is a whole page?
Oh, okay, so thirty, thirty A and B is like...
You need all of Article thirty.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
All right.
And you know what I would suggest, actually? I would suggest you take a look at that whole warrant.
That's if she's got it, she was having trouble finding it.
Okay, if she, if she has it, take a look at the whole warrant. If not, I'd be happy with those. If, you know, I don't know why the changes would be anywhere else other than in A and B because they list them, they continue on into C. Um, but if you can find that, that would be useful.
So the whole warrant?
Yeah.
The whole warrant, if you can copy it. If not, I'd be happy just to see the whole of thirty, yes.
Okay.
The whole of thirty.
We can do that.
Okay. Right?
Yep.
All right, so...
So we're continuing to get your...
We're gonna continue again, I guess.
We didn't connect together.
Can I still meet with some?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So when's the next meeting?
Could, could we, uh, fit them in on our forty B?
Yeah, I'm sure we probably can, on the twenty-ninth you may.
Yeah, we could do, we could do it in two, two weeks.
Okay.
If you can get it ready, then.
Well, it's just a matter of... See the, the, the registry down in Salem didn't have it. No one had it. Leslie filed this on the old books.
Well, these, these are, these are official town records.
Right, so, sorry.
No, so, so what I'm saying is...
She has, she probably has the rest.
Instead of waiting until the third, uh...
Week in July.
Thirty of July.
Yeah.
If you can, if you think you can get it done, we'll continue your...
Oh, Salem.
Do it.
She's have all the, all the books. So I think the problem was...
Okay.
The condition of the books.
Okay, well, just give it the option.
Yeah.
I think, 'cause they was just kind of going around town hall.
Does someone want to make a motion that we continue until June twenty, uh, yeah, June twenty-ninth?
I make a motion to continue this hearing to the June twenty-ninth date.
Okay.
Do you meet here on June twenty-ninth, same time?
Yeah. Can I have a second?
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Should take us five minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good, thank you very much.
Well, just only go back because we concentrated on this. Did we think we were okay with the size of the accessory in...
Howie, to be honest with you, I've, I've drilled into this and I really didn't pay too much attention to that. I don't remember that being an issue.
Yeah, I don't either.
I know we discussed it the first night.
It's an existing structure.
Yeah, Doug, Doug said that last meeting, he said that the, the little plan that I brought in...
Right.
Met the requirements that I was... Less than thirty-five percent of the original structure.
Yeah, I just think I want you to come back in a few weeks and then, you know...
But even so, if it's off, you know, you change one, you know, you change the wall a couple of feet.
Well, there you go. As long as you can make it work, then it doesn't really matter. You can, you can reverse engineer it to the size of the house.
Primary house is a certain size and it allows a certain size for the unit.
So you understand that?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Good. So can you, uh, give them a sheet of sign?
Yep.
And these are yours.
Oh, no, those are your copies.
These are our copies.
I, I made copies.
Oh, great.
One I gave Doug before, we can try to shrink it down.
It was hard to read.
And you couldn't read it.
You have, you have copies?
Yeah.
And we'll, uh, hear you first on the twenty ninth.
Okay.
So that hopefully you don't be very long in your board through the forty B, uh...
You don't want to wait.
Yeah, okay. Now, I'll take your word for it.
We're gonna fill up.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Take care.
I feel, thank you very much.
Done.
You're done, sir?
Yep, that's it.
All right, so we'll see.
Twenty-nine.
Right, for that break.
All right.
Are we just asking? Just one person?
All right, so, all right. Next hearing is a continued one also for Derek Snare.
So, do I understand to pick up where we left off? Or do you want to see?
I, I mean, I remember the issues, but I don't know if anybody wants a little bit of a recount of...
Yeah, just give us a quick overview again of what, what you're doing. And why we asked you to come back and what you're gonna do to fix it.
Um, well, we don't know that we've done anything wrong yet.
Yeah.
So, um, it started out as a, uh, potential renovation project of an existing house, but we very quickly realized that we were going to go over the allowable, um, amount you can spend. Uh, because of, well, lots of reasons. So it turned into a new house on plan. And, uh, we, it's sort of basically situated over the existing, um, house. But we twisted the, uh, orientation of the house just to take advantage of the views. So we're not looking at the back of the house. So the issue where we left off last week was, um, our deck, uh, essentially, and, and our stairs, uh, where we, our takeoff points were situated in the, uh, the building. And they're on this, did we?
Was it an easement?
Or a right way, or anyway, this was...
Yes.
Um, it would all be both. So the question was, I think partially, was there any need to be any setbacks from, from those things? I think that's where we left off and, um, yeah.
Okay. So, um, did we get an answer?
We discussed that one with Jenny also. That was on that iPad that I passed around before. That's the, that's the answer that was relative to this. Uh, there was an encroachment there before. We may not approve a project that has less than twenty feet from the frontage or ten from sides and rear unless a closer line previously existed.
Yeah.
It did, there was actually an encroachment there.
Right.
So we have bettered the setback here. Uh, and even though it's a zero setback, we can approve it if we choose to.
Got a little question for that, okay?
What's that?
It's an improvement.
It is an improvement over what existed, definitely.
Right. Are the three lots actually three lots?
Um, I, yes, there are three lots of land. What their status is, I'm not quite sure. Um, they're not contiguous, so, you know, to put them together for FAR or lot coverage, I don't think you could do. I don't know that either of them have frontage of their own on a developed way. Maybe that one does. Maybe you could say that as a frontage on a developed way. I'm not sure whether it's paying a, paying a betterment or not. If there's no betterment on it, um, it would be a non-buildable lot anyway. So this one might lack everything.
Right, so in terms of positioning and approving and what might come down the road for someone thinking they have three lots instead of one and you're putting one house on three lots, so to speak.
You're getting over my pay grade now.
Why, I know lots, but why don't they contiguous if they're all in the same area?
Uh, because they have a right, a ten-foot right away that separates some of them. They don't, none of them share even a... Yeah, none of them share even a point because this is that extension of that T. So it chops that off there and this one is completely contained.
As opposed to an easement.
Wow.
All right. And I think that was the only outstanding question that we had for these folks. We'd been through everything else. I think we'd been through their height and their lot coverage and their FAR, um, their methods of construction and a few other things we talked about.
Yes, and it's the front yard setback.
It was on...
And it was the use of three lots as opposed to being restricted, limited to one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that was what we discussed.
So, uh, do you think we need any more discussion or does anybody want to make a motion?
We can make a motion.
Okay.
I need no further discussion.
Yeah. You want to make a motion?
Sure, if we have a special permit here.
He is looking for a special permit.
That's correct. Self-proposed with grant of special permit. From the league from ninety-seven dash four D, P I O D. That the lot coverage, that the FAR, the existing to new bedrooms and the height all conform to the P I O D. That the side yard setbacks conform to the P I O D. That the front yard setback, which is nonexistent, has been improved and bettered.
And that was the term you said?
Front. To, what is the dimension of the front?
The front setback?
Yeah.
Zero.
It was there.
Uh, it was an encroachment, actually.
So it's zero now, which better to...
It was minus four. That says two foot eight right there, is that...
But it's right here, Eric.
Right, so it was zero and it goes to...
And this, now, then this is zero, this, the steps.
Okay.
But they used to be a walkway that...
There were steps in the walkway that came down over here.
Looking at the deck, trying to figure out where that was.
Yeah.
I didn't see the stairs, like somehow it was... And that the change is not more detrimental to the, to the existing neighborhood.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Anthony Bonacorso, represented by Mark Krippen, inspired, thirty-eight Fordham Way, Plum Island. Newberry assesses map U zero-one dash zero dash eight. Yeah, and is requesting a special permit for relief in section eighty-seven dash four D four from the Newberry zoning bylaws to reconstruct a single-family dwelling destroyed by a storm if the proposed construction will increase the height, coverage of the lot.
And, um, attorney general's handed in the legal audit.
Okay.
The, uh, the application is a lot faster.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
You can go ahead and start and I'll be ready.
Sure. Um, as was mentioned, this is, uh, uh, thirty-eight Fordham Way. And it is a reconstruction of a vacant lot. Um, the property is located in the P I O D and also in the residential agricultural district. Um, the previous structure was, as also mentioned, was destroyed by a storm. Um, the applicant is seeking to rebuild, um, pursuant to ninety-seven dash four. Um, and as a result, requires a finding, a special permit actually, because of an increase in height and also an increase in lot coverage and FAR. Um, but change of the footprint is what triggers it. So we have maintained all of the dimensional requirements in the P I O D. However, we do have that, uh, that height increase and also, um, the FAR will be going up. Uh, the change of the footprint is very small. Uh, it's up from eighteen hundred forty-four square feet to nineteen hundred twenty-two square feet. Um, the change in FAR is somewhat larger, from eight point six to twenty-one point two. Uh, however, uh, still well within, uh, the parameters for the P I O D. Um, the structure that was there before hugged the side setback and had a side setback of five point three. Uh, we're improving that now so that it actually applies and it's more than ten feet. We're making that eleven point two. Uh, and then the other side setback is also being improved somewhat, even though it already complied with the P I O D at ten point six. It's going to ten point nine. The front setback is changing. Um, the original, uh, home was farther from the street. Uh, however, I think, um, at least I hope we can agree that it makes some sense for a beachfront home to be actually closer to the street and farther away from the storm surge, uh, which was the thinking behind this. Um, and as the applicant mentioned in the, uh, application that just preceded us, this front setback is allowed pursuant to the existing buildings that are adjacent to it. So we're keeping the same street line as we are with thirty-six Fordham Way, so... And so there's, there's no, uh, non-conformity created by doing that. And so with this proposal, uh, we are saying that basically we're building a structure that is similar in height to the other structures in the neighborhood. Uh, we are within all the parameters in the P I O D. Uh, we stay within lot coverage, we improve setbacks, and, uh, we're going to create a floodproofed house. So, uh, as you know, the existing, uh, structure that was there before wasn't, uh, floodproofed. This one will be. Uh, as I pointed out in the memo that I filed, one of the intents of the Plum Island overlay district is to, uh, diminish damage from floods. Uh, I quoted the intent and purpose right from the beginning of the ordinance. And so based on all of those factors, we would submit to you that this structure will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what was there before. Quite the contrary, uh, it will fit the intent and purpose of the Plum Island overlay district, um, once it's constructed. Uh, and that concludes my presentation. If you have any taking questions.
So, uh... Who owns the property now?
It is the Kirk Patricks.
Okay, so, uh, why are they not applying?
They did sign the, uh, application.
Oh, I understood that. I'm sorry. Looked like it was printed in it. But I guess it's where it's supposed to be printed. That was my question too.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know if it was... Okay, so... Good point, match me.
Am I missing something with the dimensions of the homes? That's the square footage, but...
Yeah, this one.
I think it was...
Oh, yeah, point.
Yeah.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, we got four lines of research. It's also the, uh, lot coverage, yeah, lot coverage check list.
Yeah, the way down, yeah.
And the FAR check list.
All right, but the only question is sometimes we, we just have dimensions.
Yep.
And with their method, they gave us...
So...
So, I was gonna ask you what you came up with.
So the first thing it came up with is the assessors map says point three four seven acres, which is actually fifteen thousand one hundred fifteen square feet. The lot says that it's one, uh, fourteen thousand nine fifty. So, um, that's just something to bring up on the assessors cards and we, you know, we all know...
They are always...
Correct. Okay.
We'd like to get taxed last night.
So that was item one. Two, there was a diagram in those plans here about existing in terms of checking the number of proposed existing bedrooms versus the existing.
We had three in the previous structure and we will have three in the current structure.
And I guess the question is, does that really show in, uh, eight and a half by eleven? If you're telling us that, but do, how do we really know that?
So if you look at the second floor plan, it shows a master bedroom, bedroom two and bedroom three.
Right, that's the new, but for the existing?
Oh, the existing. Uh, that was taken from an old assessor card.
So can we jump to my next question?
Yes.
The FAR for, um, gross interiors. I measured one thousand nine hundred and thirty-one. What's listed is one thousand nine hundred and twenty-two point three. Um, I may have counted the stair on the side at four feet for its entire length. So in terms of measuring it, I'd say the, uh, the FAR checks off. Um, I'm sorry.
The lot?
The lot coverage check.
Right.
In the assessors map, if you add up what's on the assessors map and you add up what's listed for the existing, it's one thousand eight hundred eighty-eight versus one thousand eight hundred forty-four. So, uh, give or take those couple forty square feet on the assessors map that, that seems to play out in terms of existing there. You noted the frontage, you noted the side, the setbacks. Um, I guess the only question I have in terms of the setback is your proposed staircase is only five feet from the pavement. So, you know, there's cars or passageways or cars parking out front. Can you back up a car on your driveway and if you have a garage door, do you have garage doors?
No, it's, it's parked in my garage.
Okay, so a car can have to pull out and stop and take it off the road?
I take that back.
Right, so that's...
It's like one of these sets.
That's just one thought. And then in terms of plowing or snowing, it'll plow right up to your, your five feet up to the, the staircase. I guess there's no way to minimize that?
It's, uh, we're trying to accommodate for, um, getting farther from the, the ocean, obviously. Uh, and if we have some inconveniences with respect to, um, the vehicles and maintenance and, uh, it's notable, it's probably worthwhile, I would think.
Now, you're, you are under the PIOD requirements for the floor area ratio, but you've increased it tremendously from what previously was there.
That's correct.
And why was that?
Well, the design of the house essentially warranted the increase in the FAR. And the bylaw obviously allows you to go ahead and grant a special permit as long as you find that it's not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. It is a significant investment to build there. And anybody who wants to build and put that kind of money in needs to have, you know, sufficient space to make a workable home. I would say that that's the main reason for it.
Anything else, Mark? Do you want to read the bylaw?
Well.
I know what you're thinking about.
Yeah, it says to rebuild structures shall not exceed the total volume of all demolish or destroy structures on the locus.
Well, if you look at the building inspector's permit denial, I think you're looking at a different section of the bylaw than what he denied our permit for.
I think we probably could.
Yes.
I think we looked at all the bylaws and not just what Sam may or may not have denied you for.
So I assume that what you're pointing out is the demolition portion of the bylaw?
It's, yes. It's some paragraph one. Because part of the application says special permit, part of it says fine.
So that actually is, that section has to do with rebuilding as of right, which we're not asking to do. We are asking to rebuild pursuant to the previous section. So if you look above, right where E is that you're pointing to, look at D. Some paragraph D right above. And where it says alteration, reconstruction, key word being reconstruction. Extension out or change to such structures. And the changes you can do as of right as long as you don't increase the footprint or exceed the height in one and two right above that. We are increasing footprint and exceeding the height. So we go to that paragraph D where we can reconstruct pursuant to the special permit provided, once again, that you find that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure. And that you comply with the side and front setbacks, which, as I pointed out, we're doing that.
Well, what you just said again, Mark.
Sure. So section. D where it says special permit. And this is.
Yeah, okay.
This is after paragraph five. It's in paragraph five, nonconforming single or two-family residential structure.
Yep.
So if you go down to paragraph C where it says it talks about as of right changes, alteration, reconstruction and the like. And it says you can do that as of right as long as you don't increase the footprint or exceed the height of the existing structure.
Right, so you're doing both now?
We're gonna, yes. We're gonna increase the footprint and exceed the height. So then you go down to paragraph D right below that.
Right.
And as a result of the increase in height and change in the footprint, we trigger that paragraph D. So we require a special permit to do the reconstruction, you know, pursuant to that section, provided we don't make the setbacks less, as it says, in the lower part of that paragraph.
Right, but you are, but you're.
We're making. One setback is going less, but it's allowed because of existing building.
Right.
You're not reconstructing it per the definition of the bylaw?
Well, it's a reconstruction of a structure on the lot.
Yeah, the, I guess the problem lies in the definition. Reconstruction shall mean the structural alteration on existing buildings, but shall not include the demolition and rebuilding thereof.
Didn't demolish it, it was.
Right, so then you want to have a catastrophe or demolition building as a right because it's a catastrophe, it's giving you the ability to rebuild as a right. And I would agree that setbacks have all been improved, that the front yard setback is in line.
All the law is over. Does anybody in the audience want to speak to this?
Can I see the plans?
Sure.
Thanks.
So the question is to be which bylaw was.
Right, D or E, right?
It was a catastrophe.
It was. Doug, I know you're not hearing, but you're officially hearing this, but do you have any opinion, Mark?
If you're asking me.
I am asking you. You need all the information.
I agree with Mr. Griffin that had they wanted to construct the house that was there or a similar house that did not increase the footprint, it did not increase the height, they would not have needed this board. They would have issued a building permit. But since they don't choose to do that, they are increasing both. They're choosing to come in under a special permit and ask for that increase.
So you don't think rebuilding after catastrophe or demolition, rebuilding after finding, catastrophe or demolition, rebuilding as of right? You think it's just under special permit?
Well, let me see about the, let me read the finding part of it, Eric.
Catastrophe or after finding, before we do rebuild?
So, well, okay, yeah, they could do, you could find it under that too. That's really what it is right there. Because that's what's happening. So they're building, it's after catastrophe or demolition, but it's not as of right because they are exceeding the total volume of all demolished or destroyed.
So read after. Pardon me? Catastrophe or demolition, rebuilding after a finding, a nonconforming single or two-family residential structure may be demolished and rebuilt or rebuilt after destroyed or damaged by a catastrophe so as to exceed the total volume of all demolished or destroyed structures on the locus and/or exceed the height of the tallest demolished or destroyed structure on the locus upon finding by the Board of Appeals.
Right, there is an issue with this paragraph because we have, it says as, so as not to exceed.
Yeah, but that, that's just the understanding of the difference between as of right. You come here, as of right, you can say, I have the right to do this and that's that. And they don't need to come to us. Right, or you can come and, and after a finding, so as to exceed the total. So there's, you know, you have the right to do this or you can come seek a finding to do that. Yeah, you know. Okay, technical, but when was the disaster? What was the?
Two thousand and thirteen. Yeah, but we go by that and that's two years. Just which one are we doing that on? Which one are we gonna do that on?
Such structure shall not be rebuilt not more than two years after such finding. Such period may be extended for one year if a good cause is shown upon the written request by the building inspector. So Sam knows that it was damaged in a catastrophe and somebody's working through it and thinking through it, and it takes them a year to file. And there's two years of a period, you're into three years. Should be not more detrimental to the neighborhood. Rebuilt structures shall not contain more than the total number of bedrooms in all demolished or destroyed structures on the locus. However, provided that one additional bedroom may be deleted. No building permit for a single family structure within the PIOD should be issued unless the lot to be built upon has frontage on the street. Does, does go unconstructed ways. Grandfather in hand. And the last one is about use, so we're not talking about that. Really the.
So I think I tend to agree with Doug's opinion. And I think that's what we've done in the past.
So a special permit finding as opposed to a catastrophe or rebuilding after a finding?
Whichever.
Whichever one it is, yeah. Well, would you agree?
That we can do it under the special permit finding rather than a catastrophe?
Because the question or the call out that makes this different. So you would read that?
Yeah, this is what we presumed we were coming in under. And that's what, you know, the building commissioner also thought we were coming in under. This is what you're suggesting. Is that correct? And I believe Mr. Pack, I don't know if the words is enough, was suggesting that this was the proper method to commit it. Is that right?
Do you put words in your mouth?
No, I simply stated that the.
Why did?
Yeah, the point I wanted to make is that if they did not increase the height or increase the footprint and it was demolished by storm, then for, that they could have rebuilt without coming before the storm. And they could have obtained a building permit from the building inspector.
That's right.
That was the, the meeting call.
Right, and so then we started reading catastrophe or demolition, rebuild as of right.
Yes.
And as of right, you shall not increase the volume, so that doesn't work for you?
No, that's absolutely, that doesn't apply.
So then you go to catastrophe or demolition, rebuilding after finding?
Okay. That is the other option, I suppose. But I'm not sure why we can't go under the special permit that we originally discussed. It doesn't seem to me that we're confined by one option.
Well, if there's no house on the lot and you come to us, I mean.
You certainly passed two years.
Here's one year for, for grace, there is a three year.
Yeah, I think we're going into four.
I don't know the exact.
No, I don't, and, you know, I'm not trying to be real picky.
We're not, we don't own the property, so we don't know all the details about it, but.
Right, no, I understand, I understand.
I mean, I'm sure we can find out from the building inspector, like what's necessary, but.
I don't know what the technical word is, but.
Yeah, I guess it just have a, the difference, it does, doesn't say to rebuild. It says to alter, reconstruct, extensions or changes. Or specifically under catastrophe, you're allowed to rebuild. Find wordsmithing, but that's what's the difference between the several paragraphs. And other than a time period, which just seems to try to promote a vacant lot that has maybe a haphazard or hazardous structure hanging or dangling or something on it to be moved along, you know, the essence of rebuilding a house on the lot probably shouldn't be hung up by three point one years.
Anybody else have any questions or do you have any questions after you took a look? No?
No.
Any opposition to the project? All right, so you don't feel comfortable with what we're thinking? And we don't feel comfortable with what you're thinking, so where are we?
I don't see what.
May I say something?
Sure, that's why I asked.
I'm, I live at thirty-five forty by eight.
Right, okay.
I own thirty-seven forty by eight. I owned thirty-six forty by eight at one time, when something. And what they're proposing is in harmony with the neighborhood.
Right.
They're investing in anything different. And I think what you're saying is you're making a big hill out of a small.
We're just trying to make sure we have the right basis for why we would approve it.
Right, right, but, you know, and again, I support, I support what they're doing.
Thank you. Yeah, don't, personally, I'm not against the project, I just want to make sure we do it the right way.
Yeah, I, other than the time period, the F, catastrophe and demolition, to rebuild structure. I mean, we have this, this language to whether we're accurate or falling or not, but reconstruction doesn't mean to rebuild. Reconstruction doesn't mean demolish it and put it in a different location and rebuild it. Rebuilding is rebuilding, so I don't see, you know, and it says that you may, and we've challenged and asked that question as whether or not it was missing, but it makes the two paragraphs different. And the word rebuilding and the word reconstruction are totally, are the only other changes, but it allows you to exceed the volume and exceed the height. So.
And want to talk about some details and then kind of check this over in the back of our mind?
Sure. Well, aside from the time period that you mentioned in the beginning?
Yeah.
Under this section? Under this section?
Yeah.
The criteria that we articulated right at the beginning is the same as it was in the special permit section. So for exceeding the footprint and...
No, no, no.
You disagree.
I disagree. Read the word re- where does it say to rebuild under the special permit?
Uh, with the exception of that, I mean the criteria.
Right, so when you go back and you read reconstruction and you read rebuild and you go back and look at the definitions, then the two totally different words are two...
I will agree with you on that.
Totally different, yeah, so...
But you do have the same special permit finding criteria, uh, put under this section as you did under previous section.
Right, so...
Whether it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structure.
I would come out and say it, I think, I think the section is F under which this, this applicant could be proposed. You wanna talk about, uh, the details?
Yeah, I'm just saying, you know, if you...
All right, so even though, you know, the lot, the lot is listed slightly differently, but we understand, uh, the bedroom we looked at, um, the lot coverage measures out. You know, they have drafted CAD plans, they have a drafted site plan. So I, I think in terms of measuring it, it's very close.
Yeah. Yeah.
The difference between the assessive plan and what the lot plan says is very close. You know, maybe within forty feet or thirty-six feet, something like that. Measures the F A R that's listed. If I didn't add up every floor, if I add up the first floor and calculate it out, it's very close.
Yeah.
So I would say that the F A R and the lot coverage check as well. It's very clear, the, um, proposal of the front yard setback, five feet from the payway to get to the proposed staircase and it's, um, about seventeen feet, almost a car length to get from the pavement to the garage door. You draw a line between the two buildings, you set the building line, it hits on one corner, it's slightly off on the other, but for essence, it's been moved to the established building line. And obviously, when you understand the beach and the rocks and...
Where it used to be. And, uh, the height is fine from what I could see.
The height is, you're right on.
Thirty-four or five.
Below it.
The site looks fairly flat, I mean, they only would challenge that or ask if it's accurate is to ask about the grade across the, the site, which seems to be flat. They have the raised mechanical room. They only have the entrance on the lower level to actually come up and get into the building. Take two forty-four, maybe, it's two hundred fifty square feet. So there's a changing room and some shelves, the shelves are raised up off the floor, the changing room you walk in from, from the grade. If you wanna get picky, you might add the changing room into the, this area, but... But this, this is all...
Let's do them, we'll cover them all.
Yep. Yeah, they, the, the calculation does include the generator, the A C and the propane tank, um, platform or shelves that they sit on. So, I mean, and the stairs are counted, steps are counted, the balcony is counted. Those are the things that we usually find that are left off when the numbers get close. You know, you come up, you wanted to look at the, your upper floor, you've got, is this uninsulated space or is this attic storage space?
Storage, the only thing I don't know is when I have the HERS ready to determine how it's, it has to be protected, insulated to meet the current energy code. The energy code is kind of taken in like its own, so whatever...
Certainly do it this year, the next year. It's only gonna get worse, or more stringent.
So what, what the requirement is, is up to the HERS, how we, it's unfinished and it is storage, but whether it's insulated or not.
So the only thing we say for Sam is that, you know, this room doesn't somehow magically grow during construction and becomes a bedroom or a cat's door or something. Okay. No, just that we, we see some creative presentations of non-rooms just because of the height and, you know, there's...
The raft isn't woven anyway, you don't have a legal...
No, but, you know, you let the short people sleep with them. If you have it, yeah, so I, I... So I think it works, right.
So... I, uh, I tend to agree with your thought of, of what we should rule on. You defer to us, is what you said.
Yeah, you have my...
So...
It's just the way it's written, the application.
Yeah, it's...
Just so that we think it right, so that...
Right, well, the application is after we changed.
Yeah.
I guess.
I think a lot of applications come in with ninety-seven dash four D.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about that.
What do you got?
Well, it says that my, the memorandum talks about rebuilding and, um...
In the narrative.
Yeah, yeah, the memorandum.
But the narrative isn't...
Which is in support of the special permit.
Narrative wouldn't be part of, well, it's part of the application, but as far as the plans and, uh, if the motion was made to reflect what we're thinking.
Yeah, you would have...
That would overdo what the...
Side plan, that's a building plan.
That's what I would think. So I guess, Mark, what I'm gonna ask you is, you wanna stay with your, what you're doing or you wanna do it the way you think we should do it?
I think we'll, uh, try under the ord- the section of the ordinance that you folks think is appropriate.
Is...
That's okay.
Ready to make a motion, man?
Sure, make a motion.
I'll be specific.
I'll make a motion. Motion, make a motion to grant the finding under section ninety-seven dash four D.
D is a dog.
Five, F. Catastrophe or demolition, fallen, rebuilding after a finding. The proposed structure meets the intent of P I O D in building height. Floor ratio. Lot coverage. Side yard setbacks. Side rear yard setbacks. And then period. The front yard has been set at the existing building line. And it's the determination that the proposed, um, non-conforming, um, non-conforming structure is not more substantially, is not more substantially detrimental than the existing, um, non-conforming structure in the, uh, in the neighborhood. Maybe we got a word or two, they have to switch around, I think, but that's...
Yeah.
You know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want your state plan back?
Motion, four, two, eight.
We have a second? Second. All in favor?